Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the town. The Ryan Beck zoning board meeting for August 21st, 2024. I know for the record that we have all members, so we have a floor. And first order of business is to review and hopefully approve the July 17 notes. Everybody get a chance to take a look at them?
With the transcription first, on that?
Okay, because I saw that there was a partial one that was done, so. All right, we'll put it over to the next meeting. All right, so we'll put it over to the new.
I just, you saw my note.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so we'll put her up for the next meeting. All right. So we have one new application, and that is in the Emily Greer case. Is there somebody here for that?
Good evening, Ben Raffchin, Raffchin Landscaping, representing the clients.
Okay, Ben, so what we want to do here is just to have you go over what is being proposed, go over all the information, and we may ask for more information, but we, what we're here is to assess whether there's enough in the application for us to consider to put it down, hopefully for our public hearing, you know, if we have enough information. So if you could just, you're on camera, and maybe people here for this might doubt it, but perhaps, but if you could just explain to us what you want to do.
Oh, wow, the planning board didn't have one of these, is this a cell phone?
Uh, we're not the planning board.
Yeah.
Just be clear about that.
Yeah, I would like stand in front of it, and then I would be in the way.
Yeah.
So we're proposing a project, if you can go to the larger page, this might be a little more easy to understand, so all this crap over here is all existing. What we're proposing is right here, this stone wall here, oh, this is, I'm sorry.
So even as I propose?
Yeah, the next picture, please, thank you. So the existing driveway here comes down, existing garage, I think at one point this may have been a guest house, but it's not used for it now, and the main structure. Down below here, there's an existing pool, back all through here is existing wooded areas. This area here, we've gone through the property and looked at various locations for this project, the clients want to have a sports court and sort of a multi-purpose grass field, fenced-in area for their kids to play, and this area seems to be the most logical place to put it. It is, there's rock outcroppings here that sort of block everything from the road, nothing's going to be visible from the road, but the neighboring property over here, we had originally tossed around the idea of possibly putting it back here, which would not be a side lot variance, but it is extremely visible from the neighboring property and also extremely visible from the main house of the clients. And they wanted, the whole idea is, they wanted a sports court and, you know, grass play area, but they didn't want us to be looking at it all the time, so with the landscape plan, planting plan, when you come down the driveway, really not people will see any of this stuff, not people will see it, there's going to be, the existing planting plan that you guys have currently doesn't have the adjustments because they were just made literally yesterday, that we'll have for you at the next meeting, just to add some larger trees here along the backside of this wall, because it was from a planning board meeting that if somebody built on this neighboring lot, which is currently vacant, that it would be visible from there, so we wanted to mitigate any possibility of that, so we're going to be planting large trees along the top of that last retaining wall. So as you can see here, proposed sports court, like pickleball, basketball, pool purpose court, grass, you know, fenced-in area here, and there's going to be a lot of plantings in this area, this area, and these are basically three-tiered fieldstone retaining walls, with planting beds in between each of them and behind, and then in front of it would be some lawn area.
Okay. One thing we always ask for, and by the way, you've given us a lot of information, so I appreciate that, we like renderings.
Okay.
And Gretchen can give you examples of renderings we've requested in the past for either pools or...
Actually, we had one specifically for sports court.
Oh, did we? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. Okay. I should mention that.
So she's a great resource and give us an idea, the thing about renderings is it really gives us an idea of what it's going to look like, and if we can see what it's going to look like, and also if it can kind of be superimposed upon the area of the property, it gives us a better idea too of what it's going to look like when it's ultimately completed.
Okay.
See, I know that there was some photographs here.
Can you?
That make you feel through, say, the general area where you're proposing?
Yeah, so if you go to the next photo, so actually those two stakes right there are, I can't remember exactly what, one of them is the end of the wall, which was that wall that you can see, that's sort of like the top of a ridge there, and the sports court would more or less go right up there. The reason we, as you can see, there's a large oak tree here that provides a nice shade to that area, the reason we had proposed putting the sports court there in particular and not further in is if we had moved it in further, we would have to lose that tree, which is sort of the reason for the side lot variance. If you're right with that, tree could come down and it could come over, it does limit the space in between the proposed, like, grassy fenced-in area and that, and there's going to be a break-in grade, so if that, I mean, it is possible to do that, but it would require probably an additional wall to be there, you know, additional cost to the client, stuff like that, but we can't really come with the roots under this tree, can't really come over much further without damaging the tree. And obviously, it's, as you guys can see on the plans...
Sorry.
It's between the house and the road, it's like eight hundred and some feet off the road, not visible from the road, but it's technically proposed for under, so.
Right, well, that's not uncommon in that area.
Yeah.
And that's, like, looking at that photograph right there, that's why it's important to have a rendering where you can kind of place what you're doing right on that, so we have a better idea of what the completed project's going to look like.
Yep.
And what's that right there?
Yeah, so this was, this part here was an existing wall that we had rebuilt and had sort of added on this part, we were sort of unaware that the town of Ryan Beck requires you to have a planning board for stone walls, so this part was built, and evidently at some point somebody saw a sport being, you know, filed a complaint, it was a zoning enforcement action, so we stopped, that's why it's sort of like a mess. Looks like somebody just disappeared.
What's the building right there, right next to it? Is that that?
That's that two, yeah, it's sort of like a guess, the clients are planning on doing work to the property, they're still in the design phase, but they're probably going to do something with that at some point, but not, not on this whole process. Yeah, it's sort of a weird setup, there's like these, these walls that don't go all the way to the ceiling, they're almost like cubicles that sort of broken up, it's almost like camp, like, strange, but, I mean, it's, it's in good shape, like, the outside is dated and sort of weirdly set up.
So there's no plans to, to either incorporate this, or expand or anything down that wall?
No, this, well, this wall on the plan would basically come to like, more or less here.
Okay.
So in this area here, it's going to be like cranial plantings, almost have a wildflower type look to it on that bank.
It looks like you're going to incorporate it in some fashion.
Yeah. Yeah, basically everything, this area here is going to be vegetation, there's going to be another wall up here, and then there'll be like a small area of grass on the outside of that fenced-in area, mainly around the backside of it, but, and then all in here will all be plants, cranial plantings and stuff like that.
And so again, the importance of the renderings, so we know where this new wall's going to be, plantings are going to be, that kind of stuff, and of course, where the sports court, court and grass field are going to be, and how they're going to lay up on the property, that's important, so. Did you say you have some new measurements?
Yeah, there was a couple additional plantings, which actually right here...
Okay, but as far as the actual application itself, that's fine, didn't think that could change, did it?
Uh, no, I mean, we're going to change a couple plants, but, yeah, nothing, yeah, just to mitigate any possible view from a neighboring property, even though there's not a house there, I, from my understanding, the house, the property recently changed hands, so, you know, possibility of somebody building there.
Is that all changed, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so all, basically the sports court would be right in the area back there.
Are you going to have any lights on the sports court?
Uh, yeah, there's, it's in the application, there's two, there's one that's like an undercap light, and then there's another one that's like a, it's like a multifish, it can either be used as a pathlight or on post, but they're not playing, the client says they're not playing or really using the thing at night, but they just wanted, if they're in the area, to be able to see where it is, sort of, so.
So it won't be on all night?
No. It'll all be on a timer or like a switch override or something like that.
Again, I know I'm like a part of the right, trying to wear the lights, you're being a...
It's consistent, so.
And consistently.
And you can see here, these are sort of like the difference in the wall, so there's a, going to be a four-foot separation from the back of one wall to the face of the other wall, that's sort of like, basically, I think that's, I'd have to check, I believe that's the back, the furthest most corner of the, basically the third tier of the retaining walls right there. So.
And then, this is just a Google Earth image from Morton Road?
Right here? Oh, yeah, I don't know if this, well, I don't think this part involves ZVA, but there's going to be two driveway pillars, one on each side over here, I don't think that's considered a fence, I don't believe that it's a variance, but...
Yeah, but just to show you what the property is.
Yeah, just so you know.
Will there be a gate?
No, just two pillars, they...
Two pillars with lights on top?
There's going to be undercap lights to sort of illuminate the driveway as you drive in, and the possibility of it, clients are sure, definitely want to put a 52 for the address on it, in black letters or something, but they haven't decided whether they want that illuminated or not, but I don't think they're going to go for that, but as of now. And we had voted to put it further back because I find that when you put pillars at the end of the driveway, we work at a lot of clients' properties, FedEx guy, mailman, UPS hit them, if you put them even closer to the road, sometimes you get hit with snow, soap piles, when people drive into them, so wanted to re-thing back off the road a distance.
Or trucks.
Yeah, yeah, so it's going to be sort of on the straightaway before the turn over there, nice and light.
Moving fast.
Yeah.
You said you had lights, heating plans and lighting plans?
Yeah, that should be in your guys' files, it was, the one, the planning plan was the one with all the colors on it, and then there's a separate plan that shows the location of all the lights and stuff like that. There'll be undercap lights on, the fieldstone retaining walls have a bluestone cap on them, and underneath that cap, there'll be undercap light. Yeah.
So the only thing that you're doing that will be seen from the roof will be the two pillars?
Correct.
Yeah, this is, just so you can see the area map for the board.
Yeah, so you can kind of see, can you zoom in? So you can kind of see the driveway comes in here, and then it goes like this, and like this, and like this, and then this stuff is like over here, so, I mean, you would, there's no way you could see anything from the road.
We will all come out and do a site inspection and all that stuff, so make sure you need to have everything staked out, you know, exactly where it's going to be and that kind of stuff.
And what do you guys see your site visit?
Typically, I like to do them, you can do them really at any time, I like to do them after the public hearing, because then I can hear what the public's concerns are at any, and I have that in my ear when I'm out there with the site inspection, so.
Okay, so as long as we get, have the surveyor stake everything out in the next couple of weeks?
Oh, yes, yeah, no, no, it's going to be, the next meeting is September 18th, so.
Okay.
But for me, the main thing just is getting this written in.
Yeah.
And it's realistic, and as many as can give it to us to give us the best idea of what this is going to look like down the property.
Yeah.
That's really important.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
I have just one question, is anything you think can be seen from the river?
I don't...
Maybe some of the big trees you're painting?
So, maybe some of the trees could be seen, so because of the location of the sports court, it's sort of, is going hidden behind that guest house.
Do you have that site in mind?
What about the primary house, too, with that item?
So, if you're like, yeah, if she pulls the plan up, it'll be easier, so.
Because?
Yeah, you go to, I think, two pages forward.
Is this the property with the life-size plastic cow on it?
That's the next door near there. You know how many times I drove by that, and I thought, I was like, I stopped and I looked, and I'm like, no, no animals escaped. So, the sports court being here, you, to see the river, so, like, over here, there's sort of a rock outcropping that raises, it's pretty high grade, so that, you can't, from here, you can't see the river, really, unless you climb up to this rock outcropping over here, you have to walk all the way over here, and you can kind of see an angle between guest house and the main house, now, there's some larger trees down here that block that view, I guess if you moved around enough, you might be able to see it just in the right angle, but, you know, this area here is mainly going to be cranial plantings, there's going to be some shrubs in here, but I think you'd be pretty hard pressed to see it, if you saw it, you wouldn't really be able to tell what it was.
Right, it's just vegetation.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right. I think we have enough to accept the application, subject to the renderings.
Yeah, and how soon do you need those?
We let, what do we typically, Gretchen and I?
At least two weeks before the vote here?
Yeah, two weeks before, so like, give or take two weeks. A couple of weeks, yeah, okay. They're pretty easily done, from what I understand, we get them all the time, so.
Yeah.
And again, if you have any questions, Gretchen?
Yeah, I'll just give the landscape architect a...
Yeah, so all those, uh...
I'll take the peers.
Yeah, I hear you. All right, so I make a motion that we accept the application, subject to receiving the renderings. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, what does that mean? That means we're going to put you on for a public hearing on September 18th, are you available on that date?
I'll make sure I'm available.
Okay, so make sure you get those renderings in, and what will happen is you'll get up and do the same as any other maiden or not-be folks here for the application, they can get to ask you questions, voice whatever concerns or approvals, whatever, and that's the way to go, and you can leave after that meeting, the site inspection, so, we'll see you here on the AT.
Sounds good, great, thank you.
Thanks, thank you, I can't thank you for this, it was very helpful. Okay.
Did you guys do your...
We're going to sit by here, though. All right, so we just have a couple of housekeeping things here. Let's see, well, the secret determination has already been made by the...
Yeah, so it was in front of the planning board on Monday, or last Monday, and I spoke to Judge Lee, who did say that it was type-two action, so I would recommend that the ZVA accepts that.
You adopt that?
Do that, and then just referrals to the planning board and the WAC.
Okay. Did you like to make a motion that we do that, or just?
I think you just direct.
Direct and you do that. And the planning board already has it. Who would like to be lead on this? Okay, Joe will lead on this. Am I miscarrying things?
I think so.
I'd render it.
Yes, please.
That's right, render.
Yes, we did mention that. Gretchen, I didn't see it on the electronic files, but you have the landscaping, did you, are you landscaping the light?
Okay, Mike West is not here, let's see, you're here. Okay.
John, go.
I was going to say, if you didn't, if the Brookmead folks didn't mind, we have a resolution for the West thing, very quick, and so they don't have to, not that I think we're going to be forever here, but just maybe move them up, is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so we have a resolution on the West matter, and Catherine, will you be the lead on this?
I am.
Okay, and would you, I know this has been published already, is that correct?
Yes, I circulated it to the board over the weekend, and then it was posted on the website this morning.
Okay, so as a result, you do not have to read the entire thing, just the important part, yeah?
Okay, that's much better. Now, therefore be it resolved based on all facts described above, and on my reasons described above as follows. Section one, the ZVA hereby grants the variances requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grand. The applicant requires a space large enough to store and work on his automobiles as a hobby, and also conduct his business of constructing and repairing guitars so as to save on increasing rental space costs and daily commute. This accessory structure is nicely designed to fit well within the surrounding area as well as on the property. It will be largely screened from view and is designed to fit within a rural residential architectural setting. Several of the neighbors have also provided comments in support of the proposed structure. Section two, the granting of these variances are expressly contingent upon the following: the existing shed shall be removed, the proposed structure must be constructed in conformity with the application and the plan submitted, subject to any changes that may be required by the planning board during its review. Section three, the granting of these variances shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Ryan Beck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application, in full compliance with section 14, fee reimbursement of the town of Ryan Beck's own law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. The granting of these variances does not resolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals, including but not limited to special use permit and site plan approval from the town of Ryan Beck Planning Board. Section five, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution.
Okay, and I know I was out there, with Parkin, you're out there, and also out there.
Trenton.
Catherine, you're out there, that's right. And it, to me, it's, the nice thing about doing a site inspection is that we're able to see that it's actually in back of the house, I mean, first of all, it's nice looking, but it's in back of the house, and there's that big blockout property, there's absolutely no way that it's going to be seen from the roadway or anything like that, and it kind of, almost like perfectly nestled in there, so I thought that was, that was kind of neat. That was just my, my take on it, too, but not a spot for it, and not a big deal. And then, just seeing the other structures in the area, I mean, you know, the other bars, et cetera, which are much higher, bigger, and all that kind of stuff, I don't think it's a big deal.
No, many of the other variances in the area, the historical variances are much bigger than this is proposed to be. So, I agree with everything you said.
I agree with everything you said.
Okay.
Any other comments, or? You want to make a motion, perhaps?
Oh, yes, I make a motion to approve the resolution, that's right.
All right, and Gretchen?
All right, Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Line of project.
He's excited.
All right, and that brings us to the last matter, please, thank you for allowing us to get me here that way, Greg. So first of all, I just want to say thank you again, I really appreciate everybody being very respectful and, you know, voicing your opinions in a respectful way, everybody got a chance to talk. We did take in some additional comments through writing and things like that, and again, this evening is another opportunity, if you wish, to voice your thoughts on the matter, try not to be redundant, but if you want to reiterate something, that's fine, and there's not as many folks here, I guess.
Would you want, but we can get more.
No, 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 we have plenty, we have plenty, but...
Send them in the bus.
So, I think...
Simple phone call, Karen can have it.
No, no, but this is kind of wrap-up tonight as far as comments and things like that, I just wanted to make sure, because it is a very important matter, and there's a lot of facts, historical and that kind of stuff, that everybody had the opportunity to either write something or come back tonight and say what they had to say. One thing I was going to suggest, if this is okay, and I talked to Kim about it, because it is kind of a complex matter, and there's a lot of facts going back to 2017, et cetera, what I would like to do is to close the public hearing, but if I close the public hearing, we have 62 days to render a resolution, so what I was going to ask you was, in lieu of keeping the rest, the public hearing open, being allowed to close it if you will agree on an extension to, I think, November, we were thinking about?
Yeah, so kind of like an extra month, then wherever, so it'd be like November 20, I believe is the regular reschedule, ZVA.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate the thought that you're putting into it, as opposed to the rush to a decision, so that's perfectly fine, fine with us.
It's going to be a hard resolution, you know?
Sure, no, I know, it is complex, and there are, you know, layers of issues, so I appreciate the time and effort that you're going to put into this.
And I appreciate her time and effort in doing it.
Yes, can't wait.
But anyway, so I just wanted to, if you want to just briefly reiterate, and if anybody else wants to come up, please state your name, and briefly and succinctly tell us what your concerns are, remember there's a TV there, so try to kind of talk at it if you can, and take it away.
Good evening, as you know, my name's Sean Kemp, I represent the community at Brookmead, the applicant in this matter. We've had two meetings so far, we had a very good public hearing the last time we were here, I think the issues are kind of, been made clear for the board, as I stated before, I appreciate the effort and time and consideration that you're going to put into this matter, so as far as, from the applicant's perspective, we don't, I don't have too much more to offer other than I would, impressed upon the board to take the public comments that you heard the last time around into consideration, the value of the asset, not only the pavilion itself provides to the community, but the community at Brookmead, what that provides to the community, and how this particular room, the community room, can help, you know, be even a greater asset to the community. So with that said, that's really all I have to add, and again, I hope you guys get a chance to enjoy the rest of your summer, and I look forward to hearing from you in November, by chance, if Kim or anybody, members of the board have any specific questions regarding the matter, please reach out to me, we're the moment to help out in any way that I can.
You will do so, and just for the record, we did go out and visit, and we mentioned up someone, and so we did do the site visit, just to let everybody know, and Brian was kind of, takes her, and it's a beautiful facility, it's very large, I was, it's a nice facility, we had a warm, nice tour, so just wanted to say that for the record. So would anybody like to come up and, come on up, and if you could just say your name, and let us know your thoughts.
Folks in the audience, I heard a couple of phones go off, you may want to consider silencing your cell phones.
I just have a brief comment, something, and I didn't, first of all, I didn't, oh, sorry, back up, Karen Stewart, Karen Stewart, not Stewart. Not Stewart, Stewart. One thing I noticed at the conversation at the end of the meeting, which I think is highly relevant based on my feedback from your site tour, is somehow you need to keep into consideration, and this came up when Mike spoke on the history of things here. And he said, you know, we had been called before you before for having a bake sale, that we were a bakery, that we were running a bakery. I think when you make up your mind now on what we can and cannot do, please keep in mind that the Community at Brookmead Foundation is a separate organization, 501(c)(3), that fundraises and funds everything that Medicare and Medicaid doesn't do. So all the enhancements on this campus have to be raised through fundraising. And I run a golf tournament out at the Red Oak Golf Club and we run all kinds of things. So if we're selling cookies every month and it happened to be baked in our kitchen, we shouldn't be accused of running a bakery. We're not running a bakery. We're buying cookies using our own facility to create it. So if we have a craft fair there to raise money, are we running a commercial event? No. We're trying to raise money by charging for the tables. We're not getting money from the sales of the things that go on. And I think you're gonna have to walk a fine line as you interpret accessory uses. When, are you gonna cripple the foundation or not? Is the way I sort of worry about this, by saying that, oh, the activities you are trying to run as fundraising activities are in fact not allowed out. And I think that's something I'm asking you very kindly to consider the implications of that when you look at how we use that building. Okay. So that's my take on that.
And the issue really before us is kind of a very narrow one, although I think we're gonna use the opportunity to try to make things a little bit clearer.
Clear.
If that's possible. It's gonna be tough to do.
Yes.
But really the issue is whether the Chamber event was-
Was commercial.
Yeah. Well, it should've been there. It shouldn't have been allowed or shouldn't have been allowed. And that's really the issue. But going beyond that, probably the most important is what you've got. And I, and listen, I'm just hearing from a bunch of different people. I'm, I don't know. I wasn't there, but you know, it was kind of, I was, I think, Brian, maybe you mentioned it. There was some, maybe some misunderstanding about the bakery, you know, of being a public kind of thing. Maybe I misunderstood what you were saying when we were out there. But I think there were little things like that that gave pause to officials. If you were actually running a commercial bakery, you know, if you had a commercial enterprise,
Yeah, yeah.
I think we all would agree that that's not what, you know, what we're thinking about here.
Right, right.
So I think there were misunderstandings that led to this.
Yes, I do too. But anyway, okay. All right. Look, thank you.
And Scott, just for the record, so you're right that one of the questions is the appeal of the Chamber of Commerce event. But the applicant has asked us to, has asked the ZVA to interpret what Brookmead accessory structure.
Yes, that's what's important here. Yes. And if you need help, go back and read my paragraph on the Chamber of Commerce thing because I tried to argue very logically that that could not be considered a commercial event. But just, anyway. But thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come on up and?
I don't know if I should check up there.
Yeah, if you'd like to.
I just wanted to respond because I'm Brian Zeiden, the administrator of the pavilion. I think my conversation was pertaining to Ars Cafe and venue space.
Yeah.
So I didn't really talk too much about the Brookmead bakery itself.
Right.
And I tried to focus on the pavilion while some of you guys were.
But I think there were some misunderstandings about, and maybe some advertisements and some things like that.
Initially, at the beginning, in regards to Ars Cafe with the Wednesday special with the Rhinebeck Guide, just trying to get involved with the community. Once we got that violation, you know, we corrected our behavior. And the venue space, the community room, was a separate topic. That may have appeared to some folks that it was a continuation of the same violation, but we just thought it was a different entity. Every violation has been a learning process.
Just to bring up a good point, Scott. There were actually some, there was some confusion regarding the bake sale in particular. I think that some of the flyers got out and people outside of Brookmead may have thought that it was like some general like kind of bakery type thing. But if you looked at closely at the flyer, it referenced that it was, all the proceeds went to the foundation, much like what Karen was touching on. There is a significant amount of fundraising activity that takes place at the pavilion that took place at the property prior to the construction of this building. So to be clear, yes, there are certain events that the spaces allowed us to do that we haven't done in the past, but there are definitely events that we've done prior to the construction of this building that took place with no complaints from the town at all. And we wanna make sure that we preserve those rights at the very least. Thank you.
Actually, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I don't know if some of the board members had questions about this, but you had mentioned some stuff that happened before the pavilion was constructed.
Sure.
Do you have, could you provide us with a list of what those activities were?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. And some of the materials that we produced.
I know you submitted a list.
A list.
I think that was, it seemed, I thought that was mostly after the pavilion was constructed, from like when it was constructed, after the approvals, 2017 to today.
Correct. But some of the events that are on that list predated. So what we'll do is we'll break it up
That would be great.
to show you what was done in advance. When would you like that by?
I mean, you're by the next meeting. Yeah.
Okay. Sure. That's not a problem at all.
Pre-2017 is what we're talking about.
Right.
That's correct. Or, yeah. Anything else?
Karen is the lone CEO of the Brookmead community. I've been there now, I think, 13 years. Just wanna provide information. I think I did last time. But just a reminder, it is a 75-acre property. There's an independent living with 54 units where our independent living residents live. We have a 29 resident assisted living and we help those folks with medication management and meal prep. And then we have a skilled nursing facility. We do end-of-life care and we do short-term rehab and maintenance type of work. So we have a very, very busy campus. The original thought and intent of the pavilion, thanks to Rhinebeck at Home, was once we learned that Rhinebeck community has the eldest population in New York, we wanted to figure out how else we can help. That has been our mission since we were founded in the 1800s. What else can we do for Brookmead? What else can we do for the seniors? We have, we've always had three massive kitchens. We have to serve, and I think I indicated the number of meals that we served last time. It was about 800-some meals and about over 500 people that come through our rehab. So it is not a secluded, closed community. It is here to serve the needs of our elders that are here. And then hearing you speak at Northern Ventures Hospital, another community event, about the needs of those folks that are sitting at home that may not need nursing homes. How do we reach them? How do we get them here? We need to build and build day program. But people don't like to drop off their loved one. They're scared. They're nervous. They feel guilty. That's okay. When they come to visit, they can drop their loved one off and they can go have a sandwich in a cafe. People, elderly caregivers, have a hard time taking their loved one out. Have you ever tried? Have you ever tried? If you alone have a sprained ankle, imagine getting in the car, trying to get a sandwich. The pavilion was specifically created so if I'm with my mother or my father and they're in parent, I could pull right up. And it doesn't matter for training. Okay? It's all handicap accessible and they could pull right up and they can let their loved one out and the automatic doors will let them through. And all the staff in the pavilion are trained on how to care for you. So if you have an accident on your way to the cafe to have that cup of coffee, it's okay because we're gonna help you and you don't have to be ashamed and you're still a person and your adult caregiver that's with you, whether it's your wife, your spouse, your child, whoever it might be, doesn't have to be embarrassed or ashamed and can get out. So I don't know if you know what the statistics are on respite and that sandwich generation, but it's real. It's real. And that's really the intent of what it is that we do. We wanna celebrate life with our seniors that come. That campus is very, very active. It wasn't, you can't build that. I mean, we built it for the community. We want people to stay here in Rhinebeck and that really is the purpose. So if we need to clarify a bakery or not, that might have been a word mistake. There's no bakery. But yes, we make cakes and we make cookies and a favorite of a lot of our residents are chocolate chip cookies or the strawberry chip. We make those. Yes, we advertise our food because when you go on vacation or when you wanna go somewhere for rehab or a hospital, what's the first thing? You want the menu and you wanna know what to program. When it's bingo and what are we eating? We have French fry Fridays. We're not McDonald's. We're not a fast food joint. Okay? We're here to provide nutrition and the quality of life. So if we need to clarify some definitions, tell us what that is. But we need to take care of the folks like we know how to do. And I'm just gonna remind all of you folks and all of you here, the Brookmead campus is top 2% in the country and we are very proud of that. So we stand. And if we need to correct something, I hope you would tell us, but there's no ill intent and if there's a word that we need to better clarify, you'll help me with that. So we apologize for any confusion. But that's who we are.
Well, you, I'm sorry, you go.
You mentioned something meals.
Yeah.
Is that per what?
Per day.
Per day. That's what I thought.
Per day.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I wanna express again, I said it from the beginning of the speaker, but you took a corner.
And I appreciate that. But we get violations saying we run the bakery. We're not running a bakery. It's 501(c)(3). I don't have a house in Hawaii.
I understand.
I'm not lining my pockets. I mean, we have a board of directors that have been on the board for many, many years. It is a foundation because the nursing home loses 150 to 170 bucks a day because we don't make the money to take care of them. I'm not kicking them out.
I'm on the board of Astor. I know exactly what you're going through.
So I just wanted to-
So I mean, I understand the financial problems and all that kind of stuff, reimbursement rates and all the difficulties and all that kind of stuff. But you know, what you do is fantastic and you know, we just have to deal with this.
Yes. There's no ill intent is what I'm saying to you. So if you can help us with whatever definition you need to do or whatever, that's great.
I do have one question
Yes.
and maybe it doesn't have anything to do with anything. I know you're trying to field this up. And as I understand, I think Brian said you're 45, is it? Or?
The day program?
Yeah, the day program.
45 has this capacity, 45, yeah.
Okay. And I know, is that starting to build up after the COVID problem and all that or?
Yeah. It'll range between eight to 10 or so. And it's kind of intentional right now. There's, I'm sure you've heard the nursing staffing crisis.
Yes.
Shortage. So we have a couple of committed staff members that are overseeing the day. So we're strategically maintaining that over there.
And what you're talking about as far as bringing people in just, you know, from the outside, happening to be elderly just to socialize, that's something different than the adult daycare or if that's part of that.
Yes. We promised Rhinebeck at Home, you can have an office. Your elders can come. You can meet with them. You can teach them Medicare 101. You can play Scrabble. You can socialize. You can make a cup of coffee because they were meeting in their homes and it wasn't happening. Or it would rain or it got dark and they had to leave. Okay? And it wasn't accessible. That's what we promised Rhinebeck at Home.
And has that been growing? Just as?
Yeah. Yeah, what's your membership now with Ryman at Home? 155. All Ryman.
But do you, particular number, say during the week or that kind of stuff?
We have members that come all the time. They'll come and they'll, they'll come to you on Tuesdays to meet with you. You have appointments and then you have sessions, education series throughout the week. Whether it's Medicare or how to fall safely or a social or bard who want, who want space to, what's this, the instrument, the orchestra. They want to come and they don't have space where they want to practice. And we'll give them an audience and they'll practice there. Just about quality of life in community.
And as you're going in, it's on the left side?
On the left side, a big event space. And it was created with, because it's a big space.
They have the purchase, isn't it?
Yeah. So that you can come and you can learn and you can, we can teach you how to, even the kitchen was created so we can do a demo. So we used to have like international culinary hour and you would incorporate the recipes of families and where you came from, you know, and we'd bring your families in and we would do a cooking demonstration with them. For us, it's about quality of life. It's a non-for-profit. Everything we do goes back to those that we, we take care of. And whether it's, I mean, we've had memorial services and birthday parties for 104 years. I would never be able to tell someone whose wife just passed or loved one just passed on our campus that they cannot have a service on our campus. I mean, with all due respect, I would never do that. I would never want to be treated that way. That's who we are and that's what we need to continue to do, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is complicated. It's Portuguese. Joseph, I'll spell it for you. P S in Peter. E I X O T O. Peixoto. Means a school of little fish. I'm 22 years in this country. Became resident 10 years ago. I run pharmacy for the entire state of New York. In the previous company, I used to serve the entire New England in terms of delivering meds to nursing homes. I don't know, Karen said something that I want to impress upon you, who you are talking to. The American College of Healthcare Administrators is the number one professional associations for the administrators in the entire United States. They give every year one award called Ellie Pick Award. This is public information. They go to CMS Centers for Medicare, the government, and pick up statistics and select 2% of top facilities in the country. Karen Zobo, this woman, won 14 times this award. That means that this place is 2% on the top of the entire country. So what she does is beyond stellar. This is very important, public information. So she's making Ryman shine all over the country. Thank you.
One more thing?
Whoops, one more thing. Come on.
Let me just do the, sure. On writing what he said, we are being asked to travel around the country and talk to other nursing homes. We are consulting with other nursing homes because of what goes on here. And Karen spends time in Albany, we've spent time in Poughkeepsie, the whole board's going to Albany next week. We try to help and spread the word on how do you do this? How do you pass your inspections and get the best grades in them? How do you provide the care that makes a difference like that? So, yeah, we don't want to be pulled too far out of the community, but there's a big demand on our time right now, specifically on Karen's time.
Thank you.
Just wanted to tell you that.
Good evening.
My name is Ronald Johnson. I'm a resident of Ryman. My wife was a resident of Baptist Home for four and a half years. She passed. It was all over. They had to have a celebration of life up there for, we had over 100 and some people there. No facility around and we didn't carry that, you know, we had. But as she was saying, celebrations of life for people who live there and have friends and people that they were with, people from the outside. It's so important. Please don't let us lose that.
Thank you.
Just because you had another applicant.
I know. And Deborah West, I lived in Ryman now for 40 years. I just wanted to say how I feel about this, this space, this pavilion, which as a resident of the town and also as a crafter, I happen to have attended their craft store with things I made. And I know they're building up knowledge that this craft store is happening during the holidays because it's fairly new. But to see the people of the community, former students of mine and parents actually coming through, you know, sometimes buying things, sometimes just chatting. But to see them go through with all of the crafters there and buying things from the crafters and enjoying what they see is really something special that's nice to have in our community. And also the fact that we know that our fees and we also make donations that they then raffle off. And all of it does go as they've said over and over again. So I don't want to be redundant about things and I know you get clear about that. But it's nice to be able to have a place to show your things that you make and to sell them, but to also know that your fees and things that you donate are really helping what they do.
And are the residents involved in?
I've seen, I've seen several residents come through only because I know they're in wheelchairs or whatever, being taken by helpers and such.
Do you do any, you and your group, do you show the residents, you know, what your skills are or?
No, it's a craft fair. It's a holiday craft fair. So they purchase.
I'm just wondering, one of the issues is the nexus between, you know, the residents and their participation in things like that.
Well, they have that opportunity to come. I have someone that I initially started helping there. Now, you know, I'm just, I'm just a friend and she lives in Arbor Ridge. And she has come through with her, you know, her son and grandchild and so on. And enjoy, you know, seeing things and purchasing some things, not just for me, but from other crafters. So it's a nice community thing.
Personal original?
Yeah, I would say so. And I think as it becomes more and more known that this is happening there, some other really well-established craft fairs, then I think we'll just get more and more of the community coming and just sharing what people's skills are that they have to share in their items for gifts for the holidays. And also something for the residents that are able to come to just go through and have a day and enjoy. And I think there's still food being served at that. I don't know if it was last year that it stopped or not because I'm the only one, I can't leave my booth. But I think there's food, you know, right? During the craft fair?
Things, yeah, yeah.
They might have stopped.
But the residents are, the residents, the folks are involved.
No, because.
Honorors will run the bus over, you know, from the one building to the other.
So it enriches them, is that what you mean?
I just wanted to, just to share that, that as a community member, I have a place to, to, you know, display my things and to interact with whoever comes in. And like I said, former students and just people that are, you know, like the stuff or whatever, want to talk about it. It's, you know, little kids' stuff and whatever, fabric and yarn and everything, stuff. But it's, it's just, it's a nice, you know, it used to be two days. I think they're going one now. But it's a nice day, you know, that's the opportunity for the community. And not just the people who live there, but anybody who knows about it and wants to come.
Thank you for sharing.
That's all. Thank you.
Hi, and my name is Mike Green. I'm the president of the community of Brookmead. Been on the board since 1999. And I spoke last time and, you know, I don't want to bore you with the details. If you know about Medicare, Medicaid, we're always looking for ways to be able to supplement because they don't pay for everything, you know? And if you just depend on them, you're going to go under. And, you know, that's why we built different facilities like the, you know, assisted living and the adult, adult living, senior living housing and the adult day. When Karen, you heard Karen speak and if you've ever been, you are all board members, to be on the board with Karen and listen to her vision as she tells us what, what we can do and what we should be doing, it's just, it's amazing. And it's, and it's a wonderful thing to do. For the time that I've been on the board, no one else has ever said, you know, how are we going to stay alive? Nursing homes are going under all throughout New York. And we said, how are we going to stay alive? I want you to know, I'm not the, I may not be the brightest light in the shed, but I would have never, when Karen came to the idea, we're going to put up a 4,000 square foot community center with professional kitchen, with, with all the modern day things that you need, my first thought was, for? What are we going to do with it? You know, we're not in the business of catering, we're not in the business of doing that stuff. But her vision wasn't about just making money. Yeah, we've got to make money to be able to pay the light bill. But her vision was, was how can we help the community? How can we bring, let the community know what we're doing here? People are afraid to come here. They think it's a place where people are going to die. We want it to be a place where people come and have a good time and live and enjoy things. And, you know, we're not, we're not, Karen, her salary is based on what the board says she gives. She doesn't receive profits from, from there. We evaluate her just like any board member evaluates somebody and says, all right, we're going to give her a raise this year, we're not going to give her a raise, whatever. The point I'm trying to make is, she's not lining her pockets with money on this. It's really, truly to help the community. And, you know, when we first started doing this, you know, you don't build a 4,000 square foot conference center for 120 bed nursing home. I mean, you wouldn't use it. So when we started coming to the board and, and I don't mean you guys, because I don't think you were even around when we were doing this, everybody seemed to be excited about our plans and our ideas. We never hit it. We never, you know, if you said, do you plan on letting people use it for birthday parties or weddings or this? I says, yeah, we want, we never hit it. I don't know if it was spelled out clearly in the documents, but why would you do this? Why would you build it? It was so that people would know our, the community of Brookmead, all right? Not so much to make money, but to, it's always, the bottom line is always about money because you've got to pay the bills, all right? But they would come in and know that we exist, what we offer, and more people would want to use our facility. And right now, you know, we're looking at the pavilion, it's pure cost. I mean, we don't, we don't make, we're losing money like crazy. As a board member, at some point, I'm going to have to look at the pavilion. If we can't even raise enough money to pay the light bill, we've got to look at, what are we going to do with it? Close it down, not use, not let the community use it? That's the position we're getting, we're being put in. Because 120 bed nursing home will not support 4,000 square foot building to, you know, the conference center, whatever you want to call it. Community center is what we call it. So take that into consideration when you're making these decisions. Because, you know, Karen would never want to close the pavilion down. But as a board member, I got to be fiscally responsible for, for the home to keep it alive. And if it is dragging money from the nursing home and from the assisted living, we may have no alternative. So please keep that in consideration when you're making these decisions. We're doing it for the people that are living in there and the community in general. Not to line our pockets. I'm a volunteer. I don't take one dime since 99. I don't take one dime. Sometimes I get some good food. No money. Karen is a salary employee. She doesn't take from the profits. Everything goes back into, into the Baptist Home Meadows now, you know, it goes back to Brookmead. So I just wanted you to really understand that and be clear about it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Betsy Woodman. I'm a resident at Arbor Ridge. I miss very few of the events over at the pavilion. You asked if people go to the craft fair. Well, I do very Christmas shopping with the craft fair. I get myself repaired at the Repair Cafe. I go to the lunches. I go to Ryman at Home events. I go to the bard concerts. I've gone to very instructive seminars on how you deal with people with dementia. So my life would be very much reduced if I didn't have it. It's a great thing.
Michael, could I pose a question? I don't know if you have any additional things to add from that time period?
Well, I guess I can, there's things I could just point out.
Okay, that'd be great because, first of all, this is Mike Trimble. Again, I want to embarrass him. I'm 40 something years.
Well, I'm 72 years old, so I'm still here.
You know, but, but talking about volunteer, being on the planning board and everything.
Everything you've all said is true and it is an asset to the community. But there's something you have to realize that when I was on the planning board and the pavilion was crewed, I was also highly involved in developing a program integrating daycare to the adult services. That was my idea, that's what I think. So that's how we got that nursery school there at Brookmead. We do value what you do, but you have to realize on the planning board and the ZBA, we're constrained by the law for what is brought before us legally. Before the planning board, what we got was an application for adult daycare centers. Not for a community center for the general public, not for that. It was for adult daycare center. And listed what the different uses would be and the different programs, things like that, for adult daycare center. And so I can understand why things have definitely matured, they've expanded. I think they're very well-received in the community. But legally, until the town board changes the law, until we can then amend your approval, like then a special use plan approval, we can't then say, well, it's great, go ahead and do it anyway. You wouldn't want that in zoning law, where people come before us, well, I know I'm not supposed to do this, but I want to do it anyway. Well, okay, go ahead. We are constrained by the law. I think this is an ample opportunity for you to go before the town board and say, look, we do serve the community beyond just our residents. And it's valuable, it's necessary, but you've got to help us out here. You've got to amend the law to allow us to do these broader things, right? You can't ask the planning board to do that. They don't have a legal right to do that. The ZBA can give you a use variance. But in order to do that, they have to basically feel there is no other path to what you want and also feel that what you want really is in the best interest of the whole community. So they're going to, they have a tough question and a tough problem here. And it's, it's going to be difficult for them to resolve it because I think they feel as we all do, what you're doing is very valuable. Is it at the present time under our current zoning law, we will, they say you should go back over your confidence of planning zoning law every 10 years. Our zoning law was adopted in 2009. It's 2024. Ryman has changed. When I moved here, Ryman was not the community, you've seen that, that was 50 years ago. It's changed, it's grown, the needs have grown. Brookmead wasn't here back then. Perhaps it's a time to look at our town plan, look at our zoning law again, to try and recognize their needs, their desires, their wonderful opportunities that maybe our zoning law doesn't allow right now and should. But the only people who can change that is the town board, the legislated by. I can't do it, the planning board can't do it. The ZBA could give a use variance, but I think they need a legal basis to do that. And my own view, just have the joy of being a zoning enforcement officer, I mean, the occasions for the town, and you are constrained by what the law says. Many people can't do the things that I thought were a great idea, it'd be wonderful, but legally you can't do it. You've got to, the law has to change or a use variance has to be granted. I think it's better to do it as an amendment to the zoning law so the whole public and the community knows what's going on and why. I mean, you're not the only people here who would support that. And I think that would probably be the cleanest way to do it. The town board's not going to pay you if you ever bring this up, but that's what they're elected to do, that's their job. And I think, yeah, I suppose that too. And I think that's probably your best way because what you're, what you're asking for here and what you're saying, I think, is all true. But it doesn't mean it's necessarily the current law legal. And I guess that's what I would say to that.
Sorry, I opened the door for another comment. Scott, I know everybody's been here for some time.
Well.
And I respect the service that Mr. Trimble has given to the community over the years. But I also just want to point out that Brookmead was granted permission to have adult daycare and Brookmead accessory uses. It was quote adult daycare end quote and quote Brookmead accessory uses end quote. What we're here about tonight is the accessory uses part. And although there are certain constraints because we were a non-conforming, a pre-existing non-conforming use, I think that there's ample authority in the law and support in the law. And there may come a point in time where we need to explore the option of having a zoning amendment. That's a process in and of itself. And I think that there are certain things that the board, this, this board is in a unique position to do in order to at least preserve the status quo and not cut Brookmead off, you know, from underneath their legs. But there is support in the law essentially saying that accessory use would go to anything that is customary and incidental to Brookmead, the community at Brookmead's use, regardless of the fact that it was a pre-existing non-conforming use. So there are certain uses that clearly Brookmead can make of this pavilion that are lawful, that are under the code and supported by New York state law. And I want that to be clear to the board that this is not about a situation where it's just an adult daycare facility. This is not about a situation where the accessory uses have to be tied to the adult daycare facility. The accessory uses have to be tied to Brookmead's use of the property and the senior citizen community, full-service senior citizen community, which we've heard from many people from the board about the different transitional housing that we have. We have people that, yes, they're in nursing home beds that probably can't get out of that at all. And then we have other people that are, you know, I don't want to be disparaging anyway, but fully functioning, that can, you know, drive and get in their cars and do different things, shop for crafts on their own. Other people might need some help, things of that nature. But the accessory use is not to be tied to the adult daycare facility. The accessory uses are tied to the principal use of the senior citizen community. Thank you.
Hi. Will you provide that kind of updated list of the activities that have happened?
Sure.
Could you just also notate on that list which things are managed or support directly to the Brookmead Foundation?
Sure, absolutely. Which things are purely fundraiser type?
They have to do, they're really instigated, managed and support the Brookmead Foundation.
Very good, yeah, no problem.
All right, I'm afraid to ask.
No more.
No more? You've had enough?
Yeah.
You've had enough, okay. I just want to say thank you very much for everybody's comments. It's really helped the board to get a better understanding of Brookmead. And again, we applaud anything you do out there. Again, everybody's done this the right way. Everybody was civil, everybody was decent. And I don't always have that luxury, so I just wanted to say that. And so what we'll do is, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing and then we'll have our resolution on November 20th. Is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah. And if for some reason we're kind of really getting a thing, could we ask for a further extension if needed?
We want to get this right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you again, everybody. Have a great evening.